Welcome everybody into the special meeting of the Westfield School Committee. Today is Thursday, January 17th. It is 5:30 PM and
February.
February, it is the 17th of February. And Diane, can you call the role, please?
Yes, Ramon Diaz.
Here.
Kathleen Hillman.
Here.
Diane Mayhew here, Tim O'Connor.
Here.
Heather Sullivan.
Here.
Bo Sullivan.
Here.
Chairman McCabe.
Here. There's a couple of housekeeping things I'd like to go over really quickly. Can you make sure if you are not the speaker that your microphone is off? And I realize that, you know, for some people who are not are new to this, most of you aren't. I've seen all your faces before, I think. Try to speak slowly and concisely. I know that as we get a little bit nervous, sometimes things get lost in the shuffle, but we're trying to do the best we can to handle our minutes. And that would be terrific. So without further ado, I'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. And that's me. So I don't know. I never know how to do this. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice. Thank you. So this is a special meeting, which means that we had the decision to make whether or not we wanted to move right into the matters at hand, which are clearly the face covering and the student dress code. Or if we wanted to allow people to speak as they will during the public participation. So your committee has graciously said, let's go, let the public speak. So we're going to do that. But I would offer just one plea, if you will. If you've spoken many times before, or if you could be briefer than you normally would be, we'd appreciate it, not because we don't want you to be heard, but because we are all involved in several other meetings that are right in behind this meeting. So I don't want anybody feel that they're rushed. I'm not trying to rush anybody, but if you, if you think you don't have to say anything to, you know, that's terrifically earth shattering, maybe you could hold up on your comments. Now with that, what I will do is we will open up public participation for the full 30 minutes. We'll give each person three minutes to speak. And I guess I'll be the time keeper again. Give me half a second. I got the stopwatch ready to go. So if you would like to be recognized to speak, remember a couple of things happen when you're watching a Zoom meeting. If you accidentally click your mouse or your button and your microphone activates, it means it's going to light up yellow to me, which is going to indicate that you want to speak to me. So if you could just try to remember not to pump your mic if you don't want to speak, that would be great. Who would like to speak? Okay, I see one hand. The first hand I see is Rich Roy. Rich Roy, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One page, double spaced. I've timed it. It's about three minutes. Of course, this is the phone. My wife and I are opposed, opposed to the lifting of the masks in school mandate. Masking is part of why COVID seems to be waning, becoming less severe. Masks are part of the reason, the progress. Evidence of that is that we've gone through two or more regular cold and regular flu seasons with a dramatic lessening of colds and regular flu. To put all our minds at ease, including the small group opposed to the masks in school, please emphasize more to the schools to better monitor distancing. And I'll say that word again, distancing inside and outside. I've seen with my own eyes, including photos that have been sent to me at our two children's elementary school in Westfield, that the distancing protocol is not being done as well as it should be. Those opposed to the masking rule are forgetting that in our schools, we have mask breaks, cracking windows, filter changing, distancing, maskless recess, hand washing. Please make sure to continuously remind the school administrators and teachers to focus hard, harder than ever right now on distancing. Our kids love their teachers. They love their school. They love their principal. She's very hands on, but still, needs to be said, the above precautions need to be cranked up now, not relaxed, to get us over the finish line that you and all of us have worked so long to reach, including the kids, especially the kids. Our quote unquote courageous governor announced that he's not seeking reelection before dumping this demasking into the laps of the school districts. This while parents are not rushing to put these so-called vaccines into their babies aged six months to 15 years arms, because the long-term effects cannot possibly be known yet. Effects on organs, brain, heart, menstrual difficulties in the future, digestive and bowel disorders. I don't have time to talk more in detail about those items. Westfield is among the places that are doing so well, because the population of Westfield, including the children, have been so cautious, including wearing masks in school, wearing masks in school. Dropping the masks in school could be irresponsible, as it could easily cause drastic precautions, drastic relaxing via human nature of many, even most of the other items in, in the package. Finally, it is the whole package that is working, not just some of it. Don't start messing with it now, please. I believe that those opposed to mask in school are louder and more demonstrative than the majority of parents, who I believe want to postpone.
Mr. Roy, Mr. Roy, Mr. Roy, Mr. Roy, thank you. Thank you for your comments, but I need something else from you, Mr. Roy. I know you've, I've had the good fortune of meeting you in the past, but others haven't. Can you tell us where you live, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, 55 St. James Avenue, Westfield.
Thank you very much for your comments, Mr. Roy. Katrina R. Hi Katrina.
Hi, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay.
Don't forget to mute your systems. There you go. Thank you.
Okay, am I all, all set?
You're good. You're good.
My name is Katrina Ripka. I live at 65 Janus Road. And what I want to talk about is the future. Regardless of what happens tonight, I'd like to know what, what can we do to make sure this never happens again? The state, city, school committee, and boards of health should never have the authority to make medical decisions for anyone, especially children. What can we do now to ensure that funding will never be accepted from the state or federal government again, so long as the granting of it depends on the overriding of parental authority? Are you willing to work together with parents now to create a mask choice policy for the future? A contract of sorts that will protect the parents' right to make medical decisions for their children from here on out? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Katrina. Katrina, sorry about that. Jessica. Can you identify yourself by name and address, please?
Sure. My name is Jessica Britton, and I live at 36 Casimir Street. Mask on, mask off, but none of this was politically motivated, right? Timing makes complete sense. Everybody is doing it. We are all following the science, and if our mother agency say so, it must be the truth. Why would anyone lie? The government cares about me and wants to protect me so much that I am taxed on everything triple fold, but this isn't about the money, right? Show me the science. Where's your clinical studies, your data, your proof, and your real medical professionals explaining the necessity of why we have masked our children for over two years? Why are our children so psychologically, emotionally, and physically scarred from this abuse? Oh, don't worry, we have money to fix that from the government. The SR3 funds not only bribed you to keep our kids in a medical lockstep paving the way for compulsory healthcare and vaccinations, now offers the ability to focus on areas, on these areas, by the 20% that's held back at that 10.78 million SR3 funds. And it's going to be based, it's going to be focusing on evidence-based interventions for the social, emotional, and academic needs, specifically targeting low-income children, children with disabilities, English learners, racial and ethnic minorities, students experiencing homelessness, and children in youth and foster care. Problem, reaction, solution. This is not a conspiracy. Declaring only one-sided scientific opinion as the truth is propaganda. One-size-fits-all healthcare is a communistic approach, and communism always leads to a dictatorship. Just look at the book Animal Farm. Too bad our children aren't taught the warning signs of this, but instead the fear of overpopulation and climate change. You cannot usurp my constitutional rights nor damage my property, i.e. my children, under the guise of political correctness and community health. What you have done to these children over the last two years is criminal. And I will remind you that the doctors and nurses who were just carrying out the orders were found guilty in the Nuremberg Trials as well. You have contradicted your own policy by putting the financial interests of the school board above the educational interests of our children. I've uncovered that with each school committee meeting this school year. This nation wasn't founded on political correctness and being polite. It was founded by the patriots declaring their independence from their mother agent, England, and fighting for their rights and freedoms. You have no right to mask, vaccinate, test, quarantine, or psychologically abuse my children or the children of this community. I entrusted you with my most precious gift, my children. Your role is to educate, not practice, Simon says, healthcare.
Thank you, Jessica. Christina, LaFreniere?
Hi, so my name is Christina LaFreniere, and sitting with me is my daughter, Isabella. And we live at 52 South Maple Street. She goes to Westfield Intermediate. And concern that I have, and that she has heard discussed at school as well, is if the mask mandate comes down and students are then allowed to choose to wear a mask, I'm concerned that those students who do choose to wear a mask, or even staff who may choose to wear a mask, will be ostracized in some way. We see that happening around Westfield with adults. So I just want to make sure, you know, however the shoe falls tonight, that our teachers and our administrators are prepared to be on the lookout for that type of bullying, is what it is. So I just wanted to make note of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Christina. So I think it's wonderful that we have 67 participants on the call. Thank you very much for your patience. Thank you very much for your input. I'm going to switch back to Mr. Roy for a second. Since there don't seem to be any other takers, I'm going to give you another minute to finish up what you wanted to say, if that's okay with the rest of the group. So Rich, you can unmute. You got the floor for a minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, for your letting me do that. Wes, it's just the last part. I have to back up a little bit, so I get a running start here. Westfield is among the places that are doing so well, because the population, including the kids, have been so cautious, including wearing masks in school. Dropping the mask in school mandate right now could be irresponsible, as it could easily cause drastic relaxing via human nature of many, even most of all the other items in the precautions package. And finally, it is the whole package that's working, not just some of it. Don't start messing with it now, please. I believe that those opposed to masks in school are louder and more demonstrative than the majority of parent, who I believe want to postpone school masking until the virus is not just appearing to be leaving, but until the virus is actually mostly gone.
Okay, Rich, thank you very, Rich, thank you very much. Thank you. I got you. So I'm going to skip, Rich, we're good.
Yes, you're good.
Can I skip on the rest of the room for a second, please? Again, thank you very much for tuning in. We appreciate your input. I'd like a motion to close public participation, please. Oh, no, both say no. I can't do that. What do we got to do?
You can just close it, sir. It's on you.
There you go. So at this time at 17:44, I'm going to close public participation and move on to the items that we have at hand. Thank you very much for your participation. Yeah, I see Katrina, but you know, where were they when I? All right, Tommy Curran. Go ahead. Tom Curran, the floor is yours.
Yes, I'm here. Tom Curran, 72 Highland View Street. The, originally, the masks were here not to stop the virus. They were here to slow the virus. With that said, I think it's prudent that we allow people to have choice. The virus is not going to leave. It will never be gone or eradicated. At this point, we're just using almost draconian measures, keeping masks on people. If you believe the mask and, and the vaccinations are going to stop everything, then you should be fine if you keep a mask on for yourself, but I don't think everybody needs to wear a mask if they, if they don't, if they don't choose to. And wearing a mask because somebody else thinks it's okay, I don't, I don't see that as being constructive for kids by any means. The science now behind the masking shows that the masks do not stop the virus. They only slow the virus. And if you look, all the numbers are down. I would say the virus is slowed. And if, we've done all this based off of what science has said, and the science says now that I think it's, it becomes our own choice. And I don't, I don't believe the masking, you guys putting masks on our kids anymore, because you feel it, you might be looking for the pat on the back in a sense, that you care more than others. I don't, I think it's time we get back to our choice, our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. All right, I'm going to go through this one more time, and then I'm going to close the public participation if there's nobody else out there. Okay, at this time, public participation is officially closed for the second time at 5:47 PM. Thank you very much for your participation. Next, item number three.
I'd like to make a motion to rescind school policy file, EBCFA face coverings, and have it to become effective February 28th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any discussion? Mr. Diaz?
Yeah, so, you know, we've been hearing, we've been come across this for, for a long, long time. My position has always been, in the past, that when we need, when, when we couldn't have people protect themselves, then we needed to protect them. I understand that there are some people that didn't want masks. I totally get that. But I, I have, I did the research, again, looking at science. I've got articles from Proceedings of National Academy of Sciences, the CDC, the Mayo Clinic, Journey of Medical, American Medical Association, WebMD and Nature, all that say to the last caller's point that masks, masks are not ineffective. They're just not 100% effective. And they, they never have been, and no one's been saying that. So the masking policy, I think, was right at the time when we didn't have, when we didn't have a choice. When the people who didn't, couldn't get vaccinated because it wasn't available, or they weren't eligible. So in order to protect, protect those folks, I think it was prudent at the time to have a masking policy. And now that anyone who wants to protect themselves, either through the, through the, through wearing a mask or getting the vaccine, they have the option to do so. And, and so I am going to vote to, to remove the man, mask mandate as 28th. If, if our Department of Health, we've been following what they say this whole time, and, and the research shows that we're doing the right things, I just don't think there's a need to carry it on anymore. Now the people that want it can be protected. They have to do it on their own and make their own choices. And, and so for that reason, I'm going to support this. That's it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. O'Connor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, you know, this committee has had to make some very difficult decisions very quickly and at times with little direction over the last two years. I do want to remind everybody weighing in on this issue that the Westfield Public Schools were one of the last school systems in Western Massachusetts to still have students in the classroom as we moved into the, through the fall and into the winter of, of 2020. It's not been easy. It's not been fun to have to make those decisions, but they were done to what we believe were to create a safe learning and, and working environment for the students, the teachers, and the administrators. In my opinion, I believe we have done what we could to help mitigate the risk of spreading COVID. But whichever side you're on with this issue, it has not been good for learning and development. It's not been good for teaching. It is not. For me, the time has come to rescind the mask mandate. People who wanted to be vaccinated and boosted have had the opportunity to do so. The numbers of new cases, as Ray talked about, is, is reducing. We're forging closer to spring and hopefully able to be outside soon. Last, this doesn't mean that you cannot wear a mask. Everyone can make that decision to put on a layer of protection, to remain cognizant about social distancing and practice, you know, continue to practice good hygiene. For me, the time has come to help us get us back to as much normalcy as we can get back. And I'd love to see the smiles on the student faces again. Thank you.
Mr. Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo both what Mr. Diaz, Mr. O'Connor said. This committee has worked for almost two years through everybody's vacations. Everybody did these Zoom calls from wherever they were in the world, quite honestly, to make sure that we did the right thing, or what we thought was doing the right thing for the students and the staff of the Westfield Public Schools. Before I go further, I would like to thank those students and staffs. The staff of each school, the central office, did everything they humanly possibly could to make sure that the kids were safe when they were in the building. Like Mr. O'Connor said, they were in the building in September of 2020. If they weren't in that building, they were in a couple of other buildings around town. So there were other people around town who helped us out. But remember back in September and October and November of 2020, we were calling teachers the heroes of the world. They still are, because they're still dealing with this. I too am going to vote to rescind this. My, my goal, quite honestly, would be to give it one more week. The reason I say that is historically, and the numbers that we've seen since we've had masking in schools, is the week after vacation is the worst week. In the five days, the variant has lessened. Yes, it has. The numbers are going down here. But the, the week after we get back from vacation is usually where the spike hits in schools.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan, can I jump in a second? Does that need to be a motion to amend the original motion?
I'm, I'm going to get there. I'm not, I'm not sure I want to make that, I'm not sure I want to make the motion yet. It seems after the first two speakers that the motion would fail. And I, quite honestly, am not looking for some long dragged out process. I don't think I need to try to change people's minds. They've been thinking about this as long as I have for almost two years. I get it. I'm sick of them too. I wear it at work every day. I'm in a building with a couple hundred to almost 300 kids a day, and they're still wearing them. And I know everybody in that building would like to take them off, including myself. I'm just worried about that one week. That's it. I'm, I'm with you on everything else. I think I'd like to take the temperature of the room before I made a motion. I think from the first two speakers that I've heard so far, and a couple other phone conversations that I've had before this meeting, I don't think that motion's going anywhere. So I guess I just want it out there that I would support one more week. If the committee itself does not support that, I will vote for February 28th to rescind this mask mandate.
Okay, well, how about I go to Kathleen Hillman, and you can continue to poll the room?
Okay.
I, I too want to thank all the people who wrote to me over the past week. 20 people have written letters. Out of those 22 people have said to keep the mask mandate. I am going to vote to rescind it on, on February 28th. I really think it's time. Our numbers have dwindled. But I too am a little bit nervous for those students who still want to keep the mask. There was a girl in my neighborhood today who came from the intermediate school, and she had her mask on, and her father said that she would like to keep wearing the mask. So I hope teachers and other students are very kind to those students who still want to keep their masks on. And I just, I think it's time to rescind the mask covering policy.
Thank you, Kathleen. Ms. Sullivan?
Okay, so I understand, and so far we have been following the science. And, you know, what we've been told, I know that some people think it's not the same science, or I don't know. Everybody has their, their way of thinking, and I respect everybody's decision to, to, to be different, you know, I, I I wanted to wait till after the vacation as well. I did. I just wanted to see if other numbers went up and ours stayed down. I thought it would be notable for all of us. I also think that if we, you know, weaned into it in the sense where we would ask them, the students in the classrooms, again, I, like Bo said, I don't think we have the support for this, was to not wear their mask in class, but if they were going to the hallway, to the bathroom, into the nurse's office, that they would wear them. But again, we also have social distancing and other things to think about, so that's where I'm coming from. I also want to thank our staff and everybody else involved, because it has been crazy. To talk this much about this, when we have so many other facets of education, is mind-boggling to me, honestly. I mean, the only, the, all my years done here, the only time we hear from everybody is now we can add masks is, you know, is going to be on sports. Like, it's just, it's, it's, it's very difficult. I don't know about forcing students or your children to, to have medication, but I know that you do have to have a certain amount of, I believe you have to have a bunch of doctors start school. Is this a movement to, I don't understand why we're picking one and not the others. You know, we force you to have those before you come to school, you know, just a point of reference. Lastly, we have faculty, we have students, and we have other people who are caring for people who are seriously compromised. And I think that we need to take that into consideration. Granted, it's a smaller amount, but that's, again, I'm thinking, there's no one set answer here, and we all know that. And to sit in our corner and say that we're right and everybody else is wrong, isn't teaching our, we're not modeling how a process should work, okay? With a parent that said, you know, would my student be made fun of? You know, I hope not, but the parents have to model that. We can't always win. And they have to understand that. And my feeling is, I know I've been yelled at, and, you know, and take your mask off and all that. Those are adults. Like, if you want your students to treat each other kindly, model it. So I will rescind it, because I know, you know, like Bo said, but my, my gut, I would like to, you know, wean into it, or wait till after vacation, but if there's no motion for it, I'm not going to bring it forward. But I think it's important that you understand where I stand. I'm not hiding behind anything. I just want you to understand where I'm coming from and how I feel about it. And no one is wrong.
Thank you, Heather. I think we just lost your video, Pete. Bo, that might have been your second, but I think you're, the numbers aren't in your favor. Bo, that might have been your second, but I think you, the numbers aren't in your favor at this point.
Yeah, the, the, and I knew they were. That's why I didn't make the motion in the first place. But, um, I stick with it, uh, and I did talk to Heather beforehand, and, and we were both in agreement on that. But, uh, I, obviously, you will go with the will of the committee, and, uh, everybody's done their research. Everybody's done their homework. Two things that I would ask for, that everybody's asked for, and they're two words: respect. If somebody's wearing a mask, please have your kids respect that person for wearing a mask. In every letter we've gotten, it says, if you want to wear a mask, it's your right to wear one. True, absolutely true. As long as everybody respects that decision, as we will respect the decision we're going to make in a couple minutes. The other one, and this one may fall on deaf ears, but I'm going to say it anyways, go get vaccinated, okay? Everybody in this town, this town is woefully short on vaccination rates. Students and staff in the schools are woefully short on vaccination rates. The best way to end this whole thing is to go get vaccinated. Thank you.
So, last but not least, um, I guess it's my turn. I have, uh,
I guess it, oh, it could be my turn.
Oh, how are you, Diane? A voice from afar. I'm sorry, I don't see your picture, so I kind of forget you there. I apologize. Go ahead.
It's okay. Oh, it's okay. Thank you, Mayor. Unless you want to go before me, that's fine.
No, no, the floor is yours.
I would like to start off by thanking, um, all of the people that sent emails to me concerning the mask mandate. Although I wasn't able to respond to all between yesterday and today, know that I have read them all and appreciate the time you've spent on voicing your thoughts and concerns on this important matter. Um, having said that, with Governor Baker's announcement to lift the mask mandate, our Board of Health voted, I believe, on, uh, February ninth to rescind the school mandate effective February twenty eighth. Numbers being down around the city and schools, and the fact that we have many families who opted in to receive their home test kits every other week, I am in favor of allowing unmasking and to allow families to decide if they would like to continue to wear them. I will also add that, as I am in favor of cautiously relaxing the school mandate, I'm ready to reinstate it if the numbers start to surge again. I was also a little surprised, um, with the date of the twenty-eighth, especially as previous holidays and time off that we have had in the past, everything seemed to be extended a week or two. So I was kind of thinking, you know, March seventh or the fourteenth. But as I previously said, the option to mask is still there. And with families now having their, um, own home tests, they can have the results before their child goes back to school after February vacation on the twenty-eighth. So my feeling is our school community needs their sense of normalcy back. It's time, so please let tomorrow be the last day for the mask mandate. Thank you.
Have I missed anybody? I think I got everybody now, right? Thank you very much, Diane. Um, my feeling on the mask mandate, right from the very start, and the reason why I was in favor of mask mandate in schools, isn't for the people that are in this room or in this chat room, I should say. The people who are attending here virtually very clearly have the best interest of their children at heart. There's no question that they believe that they are doing what they believe to be right for their kids. There's, I have no doubt of that. Unfortunately, um, I came from a law enforcement background, and some, the same thing can't be said for other kids, as parents. Um, so very often what would happen is the school department would become a uh, a ground for people to send their kids to. Um, and unfortunately, we have a section of society that doesn't care as much as you do, so I will just leave it at that. I'm, I too am in favor, I am in favor of dropping the mask mandate effective, um, on the twenty-eighth. Um, I think that we have been following, and I'm new to this, so it's only been a month and a half for me, but we have been following the guidelines kind of all along of what Desi has set out. I don't see any compelling reason, me personally, uh, I don't see any compelling reason to, to move it further out or shorten it. Um, at least, you know, we have, get some consistency from somewhere. So, um, again, I thank everybody for your patience. By the way, I do appreciate people's opinions that are, that run counter to mine. Because when you take the time and you listen to people's opinions that run counter to yours, very often you learn things that you would not have known. So I thank you for those folks that are in the room probably snickering, because I do try to answer most of them, but I have to be honest with you. There's, you're only human. There's, there's lots of them to try to answer. I promise you that I've read them all, and I appreciate all of your commentary and hard work. I also appreciate the commentary and hard work of those people who are working in our schools. Those are the school nurses, the staff, the teachers, all of the educators, and our kids. You know, we're all in this kind of together, and, um, I think we're better together. So, having said that, um, Madam Mayhew, oh, oh, hold on, we have a leg. Heather, go ahead.
I just wanted to leave it with, I think it's important to, we were talking about the kids. There may be teachers that want to wear a mask, and I want to be able, and, um, they shouldn't be ridiculed or held back for that either.
Agreed.
That's important that we're, you know, if a teacher decides that they want to wear that mask, that's their decision.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody would say that they weren't an adult and they couldn't wear the mask. I, I think that's kind of,
Well, they're going to say, because they're worried about the students not being able to see them speak.
Thank you, everybody. That's all right. Thank you, everybody. Um, Madam Mayhew. Can you call the vote, please?
Yes. Ramon Diaz.
Yes, sorry, and I'm mute.
Kathleen Hillman.
This is, this was,
Yeah, should we read, should we read the vote first, Diane?
Did I not?
Yeah, a while ago.
It was, it was to reset.
It was a vote to rescind.
I motioned to rescind school committee policy E B C F A face coverings and to become effective February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, and Mr. Diaz seconded that.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Go ahead, you're good.
I'll continue. Kathleen Hillman.
Yes.
Diane Mayhew, yes? Tim O'Connor?
Yes.
Heather Sullivan?
Yes.
Bo Sullivan?
Yes.
And Chairman McCabe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, everyone. Um, item, item four?
I'd like to make a motion to amend school po, school committee policy file J I C A student dress.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor. Um, on our existing policy, we had put in place that a face covering, um, that covers the nose and mouth must be worn by all individuals in school buildings or on school grounds and on school transportation. Um, exempted from this policy are students requiring a medical or safety exemption as determined by the building principal in accordance with the district face covering policy. We want to take that section, that paragraph out, and we want to put in, um, effective, it be, it would be effective immediately when we finish this evening. A face covering that covers the nose and mouth is voluntary in school buildings or on school grounds, but must be worn on school transportation. For as long as the federal mandate is in place, face coverings must be worn on school transportation. And that is the only, um, amendment to this policy that we are looking to change this evening.
Bo, you might beat me to it. Go ahead.
Uh, that's, that won't take effect immediately, right? That will be on February twenty eighth, correct?
Yes, thank you, uh, Bo, for making that clarification.
Because this goes hand in hand with the last policy.
Right, tomorrow we have to wear masks.
Correct.
School and on school buses until further notice.
So, would it be okay if I just read it and inserted the February twenty eighth language? So I would like to, I would like to amend the current motion?
Correct.
To read,
Thank you.
A face covering that covers the nose and mouth is voluntary in school buildings or on school grounds, but must be worn on school transportation effective February twenty eighth. For as long as the federal mandate is in place, face coverings must be worn on school transportation.
Just add the year, add the year to that.
Add the year.
February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah.
Consider it done.
Yeah.
And I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion?
Madam May, go ahead, Bo.
Can I ask you a question? I know the M A S C, and this I guess would be for Stefan, um, said, uh, in nurse's office too. Our, our policy does not say that, correct? But is that federal or is that just a recommendation from M A S C?
It's a recommendation.
Okay, so it's not on ours. Okay.
Well, can I also add to that? I believe that the, the mask, Board of Health mask mandate was repealed everywhere but in medical buildings as part of their issue. So, I don't know how that's going to work for us, Bo.
I, I suppose we're still, we're still in a school building and not a medical building. So, if it's not part of our policy, I don't see how we can enforce it.
Yeah, and I guess the thought there is that we don't want someone that has COVID in the nurse's office to spread it, right? So put on your mask if you're going in there for something, and you're going to be sick.
Right, I think this is a bureaucratic conundrum, though.
It is.
I don't think anybody would disagree with you that if you were walking into a nurse's office believing that you had COVID-type symptoms, that it would be irresponsible to ask you to put on a mask at that point, would it?
No. No.
So how do you want to handle it?
Um, this would not go, this would not go under student dress.
Right. Right, okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Mayhew?
Kathleen Hillman.
Yes.
Diane Mayhew, yes? Tim O'Connor?
Yes.
Heather Sullivan?
Yes.
Ramon Diaz?
Yes.
Bo Sullivan?
Yes.
And Chairman McCabe?
Yes, and on that, can I have, uh, would it be appropriate to ask, just to get a clarification sometime, on the nurse's office? Because I think we probably should, in all of the nurse's office across the district. Stefan, is that okay with you?
Yeah, I think we can require it, and, um, and I think for the point that you made exactly, if you have COVID symptoms, please put a mask on when you're going into the nurse's office. I mean, um, but we'll do some work on it and get back to you.
Thank you.
The, the nurse's,
Motion carries. Sorry.
The nurse's office would have plenty of masks to offer, correct, Stefan?
We have plenty of masks to offer still in general, even for those, um, folks that wanted, that voluntarily want to wear a mask. We have it.
Thank you. Item, uh, five?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the first reading and go to a second and final reading by title only of school policy file J I C A student dress.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor, this is the, um, policy that we just amended, and for it to become effective on February twenty eighth, we need to waive the first reading to get it done this evening.
Understood. Any further discussion? Seeing none? Madam Mayhew?
Diane Mayhew, yes? Tim O'Connor?
Yes.
Heather Sullivan?
Yes.
Ramon Diaz?
Yes.
Kathleen Hillman?
Yes.
Bo Sullivan?
Yes.
And Chairman McCabe?
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Diane. Item, item, item six. Any other items not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the meeting? I'm watching a cat move around here, so I have a distraction. Seeing none, the next regular scheduled school committee meeting is scheduled for March the seventh, twenty twenty-two at, it doesn't say, but I'm going to assume,
Seven.
Seven.
Seven o'clock.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Madam Mayhew?
Uh, Heather Sullivan?
Yes.
Ramon Diaz?
Yes.
Kathleen Hillman?
Yes.
Diane Mayhew, yes? Tim O'Connor?
Yes.
Bo Sullivan?
Yes.
And Chairman McCabe?
And before I give you my answer, I want to thank everybody for hanging with this. It's a very, very difficult topic. Um, I know that it's taken a lot of our time, as it should. Um, and thank you very much for your diligence and your understanding of the matter, and yes.